Thank you so much for waiting. I'm sorry I didn't have the link until now. Um, so thank you very much for everybody that's here. Okay, so today, um, on the agenda, we're going to be talking about the streetlights. Um, so there's two. Can everybody hear me? I don't know if I'm talking to anybody. I see TJ. Hi TJ.
Sure can.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Joseph. Um, good, sorry about that. I just got the link, so I apologize. Um, but thank you again for, um, having, being at this meeting. Um, when I sent out the request for the streetlight meeting, we have, we're having two, um, I guess, different conversations. One of them is regarding the streetlights that, um, are coming and I'm so excited about the LEDs and, um, the new, uh, lights and hopefully we won't be having the problem that we're currently having, which is the other issue regarding streetlights. And I actually have my, um, Mr. Zepki is here with me. He doesn't get on Zoom, so I'm having him share my Zoom. Um, regarding the streetlights issue that a lot of residents in the city, um, are complaining about. The mayor and I actually had a conversation about it and it's the mayor's pet peeve as well as mine. And it's the streetlights that are dark. Um, you know, I drive around the city at night and it's, I could count the streetlights and they're like, at sometimes over 20, 25. If I'm riding with somebody, when I'm driving myself, I know I missed them. Um, so those are the two issues. And I, since I have Mr. Zepki here and I don't want to keep him too long, I do want to, um, address that issue. Um, and EverSource is not here and I know that there should be involved in this conversation. Or are they here? Is anyone here from EverSource?
Hmm.
Yes, counselor, we're here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you so much. Um, so thank you.
Yeah, also, yeah, um, for audio visual, there's one, there's me, um, coming through the TV, my computer, but then the audio is on the, um, the landline you see. And, um, with me, counselor, uh, obviously for the rest of the audience, I'm Joe Mitchell, community relations for EverSource Energy. Uh, with me is, um, Eric Falcone, the manager of electric operations. Um, David Velez, who's the director of electric operations. Um, Rob Davis, who's one of our engineers, a very sharp individual, and Vanessa Klein, who's, uh, the account executive for Springfield.
Perfect. Thank you. And thank you so much for being here, Joe. I didn't, um, recognize you. I didn't see your picture. Um, so thank you so much for being here. So those are the two issues. If we could please, um, start first with the, um, the streetlights that are out. Um, if it's okay, I have Mr. Zepki here and then I know there's a lot of other residents in the city who had the same issue. I would just like for him to share a little bit of his concerns and then we can, uh, maybe get some feedback. And if there's anyone else that might be, um, interested, um, then you can also share. So Mr. Zepki, go ahead. This is Roger Zepki. Say your, um, address, name and address.
Uh, my name is Roger Zepki. I live at, uh, Eight Laurel Lane in Wilbraham. But I own quite a bit of property right here on Main and Oak Street, all the big buildings along here. And my biggest problem is I've been calling the electric light company three months in a row, trying to get the streetlights out in front of my businesses right here on Main Street, relit. And I can't understand why I can't get these streetlights relit right out in front of my businesses. Now, two weeks ago, I drove down State Street. Twenty-one streetlights on State Street were not lit from St. Michael Cemetery down to Main Street. I took a right on Main Street. I drove from, uh, State Street onto Main Street down as far as the arch. Twelve more streetlights right on Main Street in Springfield not lit. I can't understand why some of these people can't let these streetlights lit. Also, I'd like to know what does it cost the city of Springfield, my tax dollars, for each streetlight in the city? Is it $200 a year, $500 a year? And if these streetlights are not lit, do we still pay to have them, still have to pay the $200, $300 a year? Nobody seems to have an answer for any of my questions, including the electric light company especially, who I've caught three months in a row trying to get 15 streetlights here on Main Street in Springfield and Indian Orchard, rather, relit. Nobody has an answer. That's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Zepki. Thank you so much. Um, and those are my concerns as well. I couldn't have maybe said it better. So, um, I don't know if there's anyone else that wants to comment on, um, the streetlights that are out. That makes our city very dark. It makes it very unsafe. Um, and I think that, you know, we need to find a way to do something. I know that the LED lights are coming. I think January, they're going to be starting. However, that's not going to be happening in January, right? That's when the process is going to start and the transition will start. So what are we going to do in the meantime where, so that we can have our streetlights on, so that our city could be lit and that our residents can feel safe? Um, October is here. That means that the sun is going to go down sooner. Our children are going to be walking home in the dark and that's not a safe situation. So I'm hoping that we can maybe get a resolution, find something, um, that we can do in the meantime while we wait for the LED lights and figure out a way that we can work together. Joe, do you guys want to take this one? And then we can talk to the, um, to Chris?
I was, I was gonna just mention, counselor, uh, before I turn it over to Joe, the city pays EverSource this year $3.358 million for our streetlights in the city.
How many streetlights?
That's for all of them, right, Chris?
About 14,500.
14,500.
So, uh, the average light is approximately $230 or so a year. That cost is made up of electric use as well as maintenance costs. Uh, as for the lights as well. So when lights go out, we do not get charged for a replacement of a light. Um, so that's part of our maintenance cost for the city. We have about 14,500 in the city that EverSource owns, uh, that we pay for every year.
Thank you, Chris. And when the streetlights are, are out, um, do they, do they know how many are out on any given time or is that not possible?
I'll let them, I'll let them answer it in more detail. However, we pay a flat fee. Uh, we do not pay, we do not, you know, withhold $200 if a light is out. We play a fat, that flat fee for their service for the year. Uh, when there is a notification of a light out, um, whether it is into their system or into the city system, uh, we get a lot of phone calls into 311. Those 311s are then forwarded to EverSource. We do not track them internally in the city. Uh, we forward them over to EverSource. Uh, EverSource then, uh, has to do a, uh, obviously they have to do an analysis on them and determine whether you're dealing, and I'll let Joe get into details of it, whether they're dealing with a bulb, whether they're dealing with wiring problems in a pole or whether they're dealing with underground problems. Uh, so that, I'll then turn it over to Joe to talk about how they handle it internally.
Okay. Thank you, Chris.
Hello, uh, so this is Eric Falcone. I'm the operations manager for EverSource here in Springfield. So just as a whole, um, you know, we, we certainly understand that coming into the fall, that the streetlights, uh, become a more present issue for the residents here with the daylight hours getting shorter. And we've spent, uh, the past month really putting a lot of emphasis and a lot of our resources, both internal and external resources, into getting these numbers down and, uh, getting these issues resolved. So, you know, while a lot of these issues are fairly simple and straightforward, they might be a bulb replacement or a photocell. Uh, there's a significant number that require a lot further effort and, um, you know, specifically, I know a few on Main Street in the Orchard are, uh, issues with the underground wiring that require excavation and, and a lot of investigation. So, uh, those can take a little bit longer. And, and speaking specifically to State Street and Main Street, we have what we call decorative streetlight poles. They're, uh, you know, a little fancier looking. They're black, but, um, those tend to be long lead items. So, uh, in addition to issues with feeds, we might have equipment. Uh, you know, heads or, or poles or other, uh, ancillary equipment that's not functioning and, uh, that kind of stuff takes a long time to order from our vendors and to get on hand. So we are looking at, uh, replacing some of those fixtures with a more standard item so that we can get it up faster and get the lights on, uh, quicker. Uh, but those are just some of the challenges that we have. But we are, uh, spending a lot of time and a significant amount of our resources to addressing these streetlights specifically in the city of Springfield. And we had one brought to our attention recently on, on Plainfield Street. And, um, that was an issue where, uh, issue with the underground wiring conduit beneath the ground was, was crushed and needed to be dug up and replaced. And in that situation, we're able to temporarily run some overhead wire just so the lights can get on in the short term. And when we have those opportunities, we take them. Um, so that's kind of just, uh, an overview of our streetlight process.
Thank you, Eric. Um, do you have maybe a list of, um, the streetlights that are out and that are in the process of being repaired and, um, you know, so that the residents could know that you're aware of it, first of all, and that you're working on it? Because right now, the way it, the way, um, that we see it is that, you know, the streetlights are out. We call 311, we call, um, EverSource, we go into the site, put in the ticket, and then we don't hear anything about it again. That's been a lot of the concerns that I've heard from some of the residents is that they don't know if, at the moment, first of all, and they don't know if you're working on it. So is there a way maybe to send a report out as to how many streetlights are out and what's being done with them?
Yeah, so we do track, you know, the numbers and we track the, the, uh, outages that are reported to us, whether it's over the phone or, or online. And I will say, if a resident, um, either calls or puts in a streetlight repair request online, they're provided with a work order number, which they can then, uh, go to our website and they can track the status of that, whether it's, uh, been evaluated, whether it's on schedule or whether it's in progress. So, uh, we do track those numbers and we've, you know, to, to our own tracking, um, we've reduced the number of outstanding streetlight repair work, you know, from well over 300 requests. And we're down to about 120 at the moment. And we get, we aim to get that even lower, uh, before we get to the actual daylight savings time.
Hmm. And that's 120 that are out or the, uh, requests that you get?
That, that's, uh, that's 120 what we call work orders. So those are requests that are put in, uh, repair outages that are put in from the folks either. Again, we get them from, uh, the 311 service. We get them from folks online or they call the 800 number into customer service.
Okay.
What about all these streetlights that are out that nobody reports?
Wait, your turn. Um, so, so, um, a concern that I had too is like, you know, when you call EverSource, we have to, a lot, a lot of times it says, get out of your car, look at the pole number on the light and, and report it, right? So if, if it's nine, 10 o'clock at night, I'm not going to stop my car in the middle of the night and try to go find that. So some of those have not been reported. I think, um, Chris said that you guys do get a notice or we get a notification when a streetlight is out. Is that the case?
We, the only notification we get is if a resident calls us.
I see.
Yeah.
Okay. So then the streetlights that are out that are not reported, what happens with those? Are you guys aware of them?
Well, like, like anything else, if they are, if they are unreported by people and we don't see them, we have crews, you know, I have a second shift guy that drives around and he sees lights out and he reports them. But if lights are unreported, just like anything else, if it's not in the system, we need to know about them.
So, so.
And what I always tell people, I'm sorry, counselor, is that
Go ahead.
Everybody always seems to make an assumption, oh, somebody else called it in.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you know, we need to get it into the systems as quickly as we can. Because I'm going to guess that there's probably 100 plus in the city that are out that neither us or EverSource knows about.
Right, right. And that's my ma, a, a big concern that I have.
Right.
So then EverSource, you guys don't have a notification that you get when a streetlight goes out, except if someone calls? Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. Well, Chris, I'm really glad to hear that you do have someone out, you know, um, looking for the, um, the streetlights that are out, that maybe haven't been reported. Um, so, so we're hoping that maybe the LED situation will solve some of this problem, but we really needed to bring it up to you because it's a big, um, concern of a lot of residents in the city. Um, and I hear it all the time. I say it myself all the time. It's one of my pet peeves. Before I became a counselor and Counselor Letterman, um, was always getting my calls, talking about the streetlights. So, um, thank you for that. Um, we're joined by Counselors Hurst and Counselors Letterman and Allen, and thank you so much for joining. Um, did any of the counselors have any other comments or questions or concerns about, um, the streetlights that are out? We haven't talked about the LED situation yet. Okay, seeing none. Um, so at this time, oh, actually, thank you, Counselor Letterman. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, and I apologize, uh, for being a little late to the meeting. I, I picked up on most of, of what you were, uh, discussing previously. I think the thing I wanted some clarification on was you mentioned that, uh, the director reported there, there is somebody out surveying for, uh, streetlights that are non-functioning. Can you explain a little more about that, Madam Chair or Chris? Because that's.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that his job is out there to survey streetlights that are out. When he notices them, he, he adds them to the list and then we, we have access into the, uh, EverSource system to put the work order directly into their system. There, yeah, as, you know, EverSource will say, their system's a little clunky from our side. Uh, but, you know, our guy isn't out there specifically looking for streetlights, but when he notices them, we put them into the system. You know, we probably put in, you know, 10 plus a week, I'm gonna guess.
And, and is 311 also inputting directly into the EverSource system?
I'd say for, for the most part, they do end up getting the information directly to EverSource. However, depending upon what the request is and where the request is, it might be tied to some other information or to something bigger that is going on that we need to let every, or excuse me, the 311 system know to let the resident know that we already have that one. It's part of a bigger problem or it's part of a reconstruction or it's part of something. But those, uh, 311 direct, go directly to EverSource as well.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah. Was there a?
Counselor Letterman, I'll clarify. So with, um, I'm sorry, go ahead, counselor.
I said hi, Joe. Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that. How you doing, counselor? Um, I just a couple of points to bring up. There's one, um, yeah, it is, it is optimum if someone has a pole number, but certainly not required. Um, if there's street addresses, that's helpful too. What, um, what does actually add, like the more information in, the quicker we can get to it. If someone says, you know, State Street between, you know, um, Cross Street X and Y, depending on how far apart they are, that might mean, you know, 20 or 30 lights and we won't know exactly which one it is. Uh, we'll eventually sort it out, but, um, it'll go quicker if we had at least a street address. So you don't have to actually stop. Uh, then two, with, um, the 311 system, it's kind of a hybrid. Sometimes if they have the time in the mayor's office, you know, they will enter it in. And sometimes they'll just send an email to myself or Vanessa. And one thing, so that the citizen probably won't get the feedback because a lot of them are from 311. Uh, but the return address is the mayor's office. So, you know, if people can dial directly, they'll get more feedback as far as where we are in the process. But I understand that the convenience, uh, associate with the mayor's office. And certainly the mayor wants to be helpful for his constituents. So that's part of it as well.
Okay. Thank you. Well, I'm, I'm looking forward to the second part of the conversation. I think, you know, for me, it's, and to the counselor, to the chair's point, you know, it's a, it's more than a pet peeve. You know, it's really, it's a, it's a public safety and, and economic development, um, issue. And it's sort of a, a increasingly mounting issue as the infrastructure continues to age and fail. Um, you know, right now, you know, I mean, uh, you know, I, I try to put them in best I can. But, you know, I've driven by six streetlights in a row out, you know, on Worthington Street, on St. James Avenue. So, um, so looking forward to the second portion of the discussion. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, um, counselor. And, you know, so I think everyone's point, it's imperative that this issue be addressed and fixed. Um, you know, before it starts getting dark at five o'clock in the afternoon, four o'clock in the afternoon sometimes. And, you know, our children are going to be walking home in the dark. Our seniors are walking home and it's dark. And whenever I, I drive, for example, Page Boulevard, I get off my exit to Indian Orchard and Page Boulevard is dark. And I tell my, well, we don't live in the country. We live in the city. And we should be, they should be lit and the streetlights being out is really, really a safety issue, like, um, Counselor Letterman said. And, um, I really look forward to, you know, hopefully EverSource and maybe the city, um, having maybe some more, uh, proactive, um, things happening like, for example, maybe assigning someone, you know, from EverSource to drive around at night and notice the streetlights that are out. If they're not in the system, then have them put in the system so that they can be fixed. Because, you know, we, our, our taxpayers are going to pay for the streetlights and we expect them to be lit. You know, when I turn my, um, light on at home and if I, if I paid my bill, I expect to have electricity and have lights. So I'm hoping that maybe, um, that's something that you all would, might, you know, consider. Um, just so that we could have some resolution, um, before we get the LED, LED systems, um, in place, which is, I'm really excited to hear about. So at this time, I do want to hear about that unless there's any other comments or questions. Great. All right. Thank you. So Chris, do you want to start, um, talking about the LED?
Yeah, over the last, uh, probably couple, three years, uh, been working with Joe and his team at EverSource on the discussion of retrofitting, um, uh, our streetlights to LEDs. We've had discussions about city purchasing the lights, the city doing the retrofitting, uh, all sorts of different, uh, combinations. Uh, and in the last six months or so, our conversations with Joe centered around, uh, EverSource maintaining over, ownership of the lights and them retrofitting our lights in the city to LEDs. Uh, what we discussed is that, uh, based upon their program, they will be starting after January 1st of this year. Um, and most likely taking a five-year, uh, length of time to complete the, uh, the retrofitting. What we have not done at this point is we have not had any discussions yet about where we will start, how we will start. Um, you know, we've had a couple of minor discussions about that. Um, and whether we're talking about a section of the city, et cetera. One of the issues that they know they're going to be running into is that a lot of the wiring that we are talking about for these streetlights, which is up on poles and/or underground, uh, I hate to use the word as ancient, uh, but they're going to run into neighborhoods that when they start to do this work is going to take a lot longer. Uh, not because they're doing a retrofitting, but because of wiring that they will have to do. So, uh, the next thing also is the physical cost for the retrofitting is being borne by EverSource. The city will continue to pay our electric rate and we will continue to pay our maintenance rate moving forward on that. Uh, those rates is our, our discussions that we're going back and forth with EverSource. So really what's, what our anticipation is, is that from a cost standpoint, our cost that we're paying right now will not change, uh, much. Uh, if at all, uh, the, the separation between the energy uses and the maintenance, uh, may be different in the future. Um, but we're anticipating paying about the same rate. Uh, and that stuff that I have to deal with Joe on and they have to deal with DPU on rates and, uh, they, they, you know, they have standards in there that they have to get to us. The, um, uh, the next discussion we'll have with Joe is, you know, where we're going to start. They got to start ordering materials, uh, and obviously get that done. So assuming that the weather's cooperating, uh, we hope to start after January 1st sometime. And, uh, I can turn it over to Joe and his team to add their side of it at this point.
Okay, um, Counselor Letterman, you had your hand raised. Do you want to wait or do you want to?
I'll wait.
Comment. Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Joe.
Yeah. Uh, hello, this is Eric Falcone again. So.
Hi, Eric.
Yeah, hi. So, uh, no, as Mr. Signoli mentioned, uh, yep, we are in the planning phases right now. We've ordered our materials and, um, we do intend to start as early as we can, uh, in the start of the new year with this process. So, uh, doing this over a five-year period, uh, translates to us doing just under, uh, 3,000 lights, uh, year to year over that five years. And we should have the entire city, uh, turned over by the end of that period. So, uh, that's our plan. And, uh, again, we, we are too hoping to realize some, some, uh, savings of, of maintenance costs in the future. And, you know, with the, the resources that we use now to be changing bulbs and, uh, and dealing with these, uh, older light fixtures, those resources we can dedicate to these somewhat more difficult, uh, lights to get back on where they require underground wiring, new wiring or, uh, infrastructure.
Thank you, Joe. Um, Counselor Letterman?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I appreciate, uh, very much this discussion and I have a lot of questions. Um, before I jump into them, I do want to say it's excellent news, uh, that the city has reached this agreement. This is a change that the city council has advocated for, for many years. Uh, you know, dating back to, uh, the ad hoc, uh, green committee, uh, that we used to have, that I had chaired at one point, moving in then to, uh, the sustainability environment committee. And when I was chair of maintenance and development, as well as now, uh, with Counselor Govan as chair of maintenance and development. I know we've brought forward, you know, really countless proposals, um, to Chris's point on, uh, the various different methodologies of how the conversion could take place. So the fact that we seem to have arrived, uh, at, at a, an agreement um, is good news for the city of Springfield. Because as we, we've sort of talked about in the first portion of this meeting, we really just have, um, what is essentially outdated and, and truly failing infrastructure across the city. So, um, I do have a couple of questions I'd like to jump into first. What, what is the, the funding source that EverSource is going to utilize to cover the costs of the retrofit?
Yeah. Uh, so we're, we're treating this conversion as a, you know, capital improvement project like we would, uh, any other, you know, reliability or, uh, you know, equipment upgrade project.
So you're funding it out of your existing revenues?
I, I honestly am not in a position to speak on that, but, you know, generally we have a planned capital improvement budget year to year. And we slot, you know, our, our projects where we see the most benefit.
So essentially, we, we have a number of, uh, capital initiatives that EverSource wants to accomplish in any given year. And, um, based on the feedback we receive from the city, you know, we now want to prioritize this effort and, and put it at foremost in our capital plan for, uh, our fiscal 2023.
But, but how are you going to pay for it? So the city's going to continue to pay the same rate according to, to what was just, you know, stated, or at least that seems to be the plan, that the city's going to pay the rate that it currently pays, which is a little over 3 million a year for, for maintenance and, uh, electricity. So, so what funds are going to be used to fund like the materials that you just purchased? Is that just out of your existing revenues or do you have like another funding source? Like, do you have relief funds? Do you have federal grants? Do you have other funds other than the funds that are coming in from ratepayers to fund the retrofit?
Yeah, and, um, Counselor Letterman, it's, um, like any other capital project, it's part of the tariff. So the Department of Public Utilities regulates us and as we invest in, um, our infrastructure to provide services, the safe, reliable power to our, um, customers. Um, if, if the Department of Public Utilities considers it a prudent investment, it'll be part of some future tariff, some future rate case.
So, so you're funding it out of the ratepayer dollars? You're not funding it utilizing other revenue sources?
That's correct. We, we have no other revenue sources in this case, uh, Counselor Letterman. And, um, but what, something that, um, uh, Counselor's, excuse me, Mr. Signoli mentioned was, no, yes, it's an investment in equipment which has a cost associated with it. But with the lower electric usage, um, and there's a new rate case coming out in January, which, um, and Counselor, and we don't know exactly how it's going to turn out. But as, um, Mr. Signoli mentioned, we predict it's going to be a wash for the, uh, citizens of Springfield.
So in other words, there's, there's a rate for non-LED and there's a rate for LED that's lower because of the energy usage. But we're going to, uh, under this plan, build in essentially the cost of the retrofit so that the, the cost stays level.
Yeah, give or take. So we don't know exactly where it's going to come out. We've done some rough math and what we predicted will be. Yeah, give or take. So we don't know exactly where to come up, but we've done some rough math and what we predicted will be. Between the lower energy usage of the LEDs. But with the newer equipment, the labor involved, you know, there'll be a higher like cost slash maintenance component. And I will find out when it comes in January, but we anticipate it'll be just about the same as the current um rate is.
Okay, so let's let's jump to, Madam Chair, if I may, um, this design control. So who's going to have ultimate design control on the retrofit?
So I mean, we're going to be, we have, you know, equivalencies from an existing incandescent wattage to an LED wattage. And we'll be using that as a baseline to convert. Whatever the incandescent bulb is at that location that's already being built, converted to the equivalent uh LED sized wattage.
But will will EverSource and EverSource engineers and and maintenance workers be the ones in control of the work?
Yes, oh yeah, absolutely, yeah, us and our contractors, Counselor, but we will be, we'll be working in concert with uh Mr. Signoli and his um. His DPW to, you know, de-conflict with other projects going on in the city and and just what makes the most most sense to execute this project.
And tha- and that's my next question, Chris. So wh- in what capacity are you and the DPW at the table to advise on? Um, on the the overall project?
Uh, my interest, number one, is where are they going to be working so that we can let residents know? That's obviously extremely important. Uh, number one, and number two is if we're going to be seeing any. Standard lights throughout the city are basically Cobra heads throughout the city, so the retrofitting of those. With the exception of having to play with some of the, some of the wiring is an issue. We may also have some issues with the decoratives depending upon. Uh, where we are in a particular location in the city, their age, uh, et cetera. But from my perspective, uh, once we decide on a location, are, all I care about is, you know. Kind of where we are, what's the anticipated schedule so that we can put notices out. You know, every couple, three, four, or five weeks via Facebook, via our webpage to let people know what's going on. Because when you're in a neighborhood, you know, all of a sudden you're going to start to see some EverSource and or their contractor vehicles. Uh, in there and accompanying that, you may also see underground work happening. The other thing mentioning to Joe is coordination with our. Uh, roadway reconstruction programs that we have, both us and Mass DOT. As well as our paving programs moving on. Uh, we probably have uh roughly a third of the city. Excuse me, where uh our wiring is underground. So some of that wiring obviously will need, if just to make sure that we're coordinating it from a timing standpoint. And they've had a chance to look at it to see if they need to do any upgrades with that. Again, we don't want to dig up a street that was paved last year, so that will be part of the coordination as well. And I know what I mentioned with Joe last the other day, you know, I don't know if it's something where we're able to start with uh arterial roads, then move into neighborhoods. Or whether it's better to start in a neighborhood and just be able to work in a particular area. But that's that's more of the electrical engineering side that I'm going to leave up to them. But as far as I'm concerned, I'm just more interested in schedule uh and notification.
So in in terms of the actual design, the technical design, um, the engineering design. You know, we had a great presentation probably five years ago, um, in the in the uh, the old green committee. Um, of of some folks who came in and and did some comparisons on. Um, LED lighting technology in different communities. And and it became very clear through that presentation that there's sort of a right way to do this and a wrong way. Um, so what, what, you know, do you have specs yet on? Um, you know, essentially the the measurement of of how bright these lights are going to be. Um, the actual design, are we going to be utilizing? Um, you know, the types of shields that are needed to make sure that you're not blinding, you know, residents in their homes or vehicles in the road. Like what, do we, have we worked that aspect out yet or is that still in progress? And how much input will the city have on that?
So Counselor, um, basically, I mean, what we're proposing is is a like, for like. You know, uh, replacement of what's existing there with the LED equivalent. Um, our LEDs that we have available that we're utilizing are. Are a three thousand degree Kelvin color temperature, which I believe was a. Uh, specific color chosen based on recommendations by the AMA and also. Uh, due to some regulatory requirements, I believe in Connecticut. So while we don't really have any of the same regulatory requirements here at this time, we are. We're we're bringing uh our lights kind of in line with what uh the industry standard is. So that we would be in compliance should similar uh regulatory initiatives uh come down the pipe later on. Um, but yeah, and and in terms of the, you know, how bright the light is, uh. You know, the 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 pattern of where the light deflects to, that's all kind of kept in kind, like for like. With what our existing incandescent lights um, uh have.
Yeah, I ju- I just want to make sure that we're that we're following the best practices and that we don't encounter. Uh, some of the challenges that other communities have. Overall, this is the right thing to do, you know, we definitely need to make the transition. We've advocated for that for a long time. I just want to make sure that, you know, it's sort of a, you know, once, you know, this is a once in a, you know, many decades. Um, capital project, so, you know, if we're paying for it through the rate, I want to make sure that that we're also getting. Um, the best technology possible. And so my last question on that. Um, it is, and I I mean, I'll have more questions, and I'm going to get, Joe, I'll get um. I'll get some of the technical specs that were referenced during that meeting I talked about. Um, and you can tell me later if we're in line with that. Um, but I'm glad to hear that we're going light by light on figuring out. Uh, the actual design and and what's going to make sense. So my last question, and then I I apologize for dominating. Um, the discussion on this, but the. Is there any type of audit taking place prior to the installation beginning? Um, that will determine where more or less lights may be needed. Because especially in older neighborhoods in the city of Springfield, the streetlight infrastructure is very haphazard. Um, and there's definitely streets that could use more lighting and there's some streets where, you know, there's a light every, every three feet, so. Um, i- is there any type of formal audit taking place to assess where there may be new streetlights needed?
Uh, thank you, Counselor Lettman. Uh, two things, one for for the previous question, uh. In previous communities, there may have been some um people not as happy. Uh, with LED conversions, but that was several years ago, so now the the industry has matured, the um, the standards have matured. So we'll follow that, but just also, it's it's just human nature, you know, change is is um, difficult with some people, actually with me as well. But just know that the lights are different, incandescent or high pressure sodium versus LED, so the. The color and the wash and things like that are different, so it'll take some adjustment, but um, we are using the industry standard as far as how many lumens. We're going to cast down. And then two, um, no, we're not doing an audit for um, neighborhood to neighborhood, but that's something. You know, if your constituents uh feel that they need additional lights in the neighborhood, we can, if you filter that through um, DPW and Chris Signoli. That's something we can certainly look at. It would be just like a new customer request, we can, you know, if, because he's the keeper of the lights in the city. If that's something he wants to do, we can start that agreement and and start a um, you know, essentially new service request for. Additional lights in certain neighborhoods. That's something, you know, we're certainly open to.
Yeah, I think that we definitely need to do an audit, and I know TJ's on the line. The council had passed a resolution um, back in two thousand and eighteen in favor of an audit. I think we had priced it at that time. It was not um, exuberant, especially in comparison to the the ultimate cost. Um, that the project is going to be. So I I think that if we're preparing for the conversion, Chris and TJ. We we should get that audit now, um, and and be able to submit a plan or a request. That EverSource could then carry out over the the lifespan of the installation. So, you know, Counselor Govan, we can, we can touch on that later, but I think an audit hap- you know, audit, that's best practice. It should be done as a part of the conversion. So I'll I'll yield at this time, Counselor Govan, I, you know, I could go on, but I want to give uh, give you your meeting back and thank you so much for the leeway.
Thank you so much. Thank you for all those very important questions and and they're very illuminating, which uh causes me to ask more questions. Are there any other counselors um, interest? Maybe I'll ask you a question. Um, so the total cost of the project, do you know what that is currently?
Uh, we we don't at this time. We're still, again, in the in the planning and and preliminary stages to getting ready to uh gear up for January.
Okay, alright, um, and then which leads me into the rate increases that we're certainly going to see. Um, and this may be deviating from what the topic of the um, the meeting is about, however. In the last three months, I would say I have gotten so many complaints and concerns about the rate increases that. Um, EverSource has been implementing. Sometimes the cost of delivery is more than the actual supply. Um, so I'm wondering, and that might be another meeting that we might have to have, maybe in a different committee. Um, but, you know, it seems like our our residents are paying more for electricity. And and gas, now that you guys um have the gas as well. Um, on a regular basis, and of course, they're not getting increases in their income, they're not getting, especially our seniors. And our retired people, um, you know, so that's a really big issue, so I'm kind of concerned that. You know, the cost of this project is going to, of course, be um, turned over to our residents, which are already struggling to pay their their electricity bills. Have you all ever considered um, possibly a hybrid solar um? Uh, source for the the streetlights that might, that will be coming up? And the, I love the idea of the audit, because right now, a lot of times. Um, especially in the summertime when the trees are in bloom, a lot of the lights are covered by by um, the trees that are out there. So that's part of why sometimes it's a little bit darker. And I know when I have LED lights in my home, they start off dim and then they. You know, as they heat up, I guess, they get brighter. Um, so those those are some of the questions that I have. Mainly the um, the the cost to to the residents in the city. If you want to comment on that or have another?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Counselor. Um, one, you know, wherever Source Energy, we're a a delivery company, so we have the poles and wires. And we bring the energy to you and to your customers, your constituents. Um, what you've seen every, twice a year, there's a, an increase in, or twice a year, there's a potential. Uh, change in the supply component, so we don't make the energy, so it's. There's a lot of things um nationally and globally that affect that, and we certainly um. You know, we all have electricity in our house as well and we see our bills rising as well, but that's um, that part is out of our control. Uh, we haven't had a rate increase for our um, you know, the transmission delivery in some time. There there will likely be one this January, but um, what your constituents are seeing is that's strictly the supply side. And that's um, you know, geopolitical. Um, as far as the solar goes, again, we're with, we're regulated in the Department of Public Utility. And we don't generate energy without, there's certain projects we're allowed to do. Uh, you'd be, you'd be happy to know that um, I've discussions, I've had discussion with um. Uh, Pat Sullivan, who does a lot of the city's um, energy efficiency and the renewables and the electronic, electric charging stations. Uh, there is a project we're proposing in Springfield, um, that's, that I'm working through him on right now. That uh will be at our Roosevelt Ave, our um, former Columbia Gas site. That the electric benefit of that solar project will benefit uh the citizens of Springfield, so that's just in the starting phases. So we also, we're very conscious of um, you know, of being um, a a green energy company. And um, if people are listening at home, you know, we have. Uh, several energy efficiency programs that can help residents with insulation, with um, low wattage bulbs and things like that. And there's also uh bill health programs, so if your constituents are struggling paying their bill, we have a number of programs for that as well. And and we try and we try and getting that word out um, is a struggle, so you can help us with that.
Thank you, um, and actually I am helping you with that. I'm working with um, Energy Save actually to to try to get the word out on that, so that is a great program. And tomorrow, the mayor and the city council are going to be proclaiming Energy Efficiency Month in the city of Springfield. And we're going to highlight that in our save program, so we're excited about that, but I'm gonna let um, Chris go ahead, have um.
Yeah, there were, there was just two items I wanted to add. Number one, uh, and EverSource may have the number off the top of their head. We probably have about, I'm going to guess, maybe two hundred LED lights in the city. What's been happening over the past year or so is that as we've been unable to replace certain lights, they've been replaced with LEDs. So as people see them around the city, uh, uh, you know, those, that's kind of the replacement that's been happening. The other thing, when Joe was talking about rate increases. Um, I did a uh, a presentation to the DPU a few weeks back that was related to. Um, uh, resident participation, public participation in the DPU process, the siting board process that happens at the state level. Uh, because what happens, nobody participates, virtually nobody participates. Uh, so when a rate gets increased and there is no opposition to it. Obviously, we get all the phone calls, you know, as as you do, Counselor, that says, hey, where did this rate increase come from? So uh, what we were trying to do is figure out through the DPU how that process can be made a little bit more friendly for people to participate. Uh, but the idea is, is that in general, uh, people do not participate in the public hearing process. And that is the time that people can participate to, to make their uh, uh, feelings felt. And heard by the commission members. If they don't hear anything negative, the rate increase is going to get approved. So, and I know we've had hearings about, you know, uh, you know, we have the same sort of issue when it comes to property taxes in the city that. You know, we have hearings, nobody goes to them, and then the taxes come out and everybody's yelling, so. There, the DPU is trying to get more people involved and that's the time to get involved, not afterwards when the rates are basically set.
Thank you, Chris. Um, and when I hear that, those comments like nobody participates, nobody's coming. My question is why, right? Where are they posting this, the 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 request for input? Where is um, you know, the public, I guess, call out for people to come out? Because I honestly haven't heard any of that, so maybe that's something that we can look at, especially. Um, here in the city with the property taxes and when we do a call out for participation. Um, we we want, I want to figure out where we we need to be reaching out to our community. And DPU might want to do the same thing, so thank you for that, Chris. Um, go ahead, Counselor Lettman.
Just one more quick question, Madam Chair, um, and all great, all great topics and looking forward to tomorrow. Um, the question I have is, why the five-year timeline?
So that's just developed based on the number of lights and, you know, the amount of resources that, you know, we're we're able to dedicate on a year-over-year basis. Over that period to to get this project done.
And just, Counselor Lettman, that's also in addition to the other work we do in the city, so we're using, we're, we'll get some additional resources. But we're going to do this simultaneous while, you know, the safe, reliable delivery of your energy products. And there's also some supply chain issues too. We couldn't, we couldn't get all the lights here if you wanted to.
Okay, alright.
Thank you. Um, so we are coming up on one o'clock. We're only supposed to be here for an hour, I believe, so. Um, I really, I I'm going to be scheduling another Maintenance and Development meeting to continue this conversation, because I don't, I don't feel like we're done. We have not heard from um TJ and from um Lindsay and and from other people. So um, I'm excited to to call in the next meeting. I'll let you all know when that will be. And again, I want to thank you all very much, especially um, Chris and and um, EverSource for bringing on the LEDs, which I think is very exciting. And I'm looking forward to having more conversations about how we can continue to help our residents, um, and see if we can reduce their energy bills. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairwoman.
During the meeting.
And if I could, uh.
Yes.
Madam Chair, if I could, um, one last piece for uh, for Counselor Lettman, who just hung up. Um, hey, uh.
No, he's here.
Springfield is one of our largest communities, but um, we're doing similar efforts, there, there's that, thank you, Jesse. Um, we're doing similar efforts with other communities as well, so um. And and they're our customers as well, so that that's part of the reason as well. We have to, we have to budget our resources to make sure we um, you know, meet everybody's needs. Appreciate your time.
We're not the only child, huh?
Don't, don't ask me to pick our favorite child, please.
I know, I know we're your favorite.
Well, we gotta pay you the most. We gotta be your most revenue generating child.
Mm-hmm. Thank you so much.
I'm sorry, Joe, as part of this meeting, we were supposed to have a discussion about uh. Uh, Newberry, Newberry Street, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, that, that. Uh that, that has been sitting in committee since June.
Newberry Street.
Yeah, there, this has been tabled twice or three times at the council.
Okay, so do we want to take uh an additional uh maybe ten minutes for that topic? Is that enough?
Yeah, because the the uh the representatives from Eversource on, because this is a major neighborhood project that now is most likely not going to get done.
Okay.
Uh we've been, yeah, well, this has been tabled three times now and we haven't been able to have meetings. Uh uh it's been set to, sent to, sent to committee. Uh so I, you know, I I, one of the reasons why we moved it up to this meeting was that hopefully it can get voted on and approved in October and Eversource can get going with the work because basically it's a Newberry, it's Newberry, correct, Joe?
Correct. It's um, it's Newberry Street and um it's part of the um GSEP, the Gas Safety Enhancement Program. There's some really old gas pipe in there. We want to um replace it. I do believe one of the councillors might have had some concerns that there are um citizens in that neighborhood that don't have gas service.
It was councillor, councillor Fenton, yes.
Yeah, and um and what it boils down to, we looked it up, there are eleven customers, there are eleven residents that don't have gas service. Our new salespeople have committed, we do it all the time, we will reach out to those eleven citizens and let them know, hey, this project is coming, now is the time, if you want to, we can connect your house up. So I think that might have been the preliminary concern and uh the primary concern. And I will commit to reaching out to those eleven citizens if that, you know, keeps this thing moving. It it's a safety issue, so we want to, we want to replace that pipe.
Okay, um go go ahead councillor Letterman.
Uh thank councillor Govan. I think that that was councillor Fenton's um concern. And then also, I I just wanted to confirm. So this is just replacement of what, cast iron?
Yeah, predominantly cast iron, definitely a low-pressure system. So um, and it's, and some of that stuff's been in there for well over eight decades, cast iron.
Um, is it the whole length of Newberry Street?
And the the planes are in front of, I know it's it's significant. Um it is a a significant length of pipe. I don't have it in front of me.
Uh no, it's not the whole length of Newberry Street. It's, sorry, this is Matt Nichols, uh engineer at Springfield. Um it's from Remen Ave to uh Whitmore Street.
Okay. And does it go into any of the side streets?
Yes.
How many of them?
Let's see here. So we've got uh, we'll leave, we're not getting all the side streets at this time, but just from me looking at it, um we're going out to Dana Street, Doyle Ave, um and I think, I believe it's Morrison Street down the end. And then all the rest of the side streets will leave what we call stubs uh facing down the side street so that we can come back at a later time and easily run new made down those streets.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions or concerns regarding this project?
Uh the the only thing that I would ask councillor is that it uh uh notification goes to, uh I mean, we can do it as well, but a notification goes to the clerk to get on the agenda for the nineteenth.
Okay. Uh councillor Allen?
Yeah, I just texted uh councillor Fenton about trying to get on here. I don't know if he got the text, but I'll, I'll talk with him separately about this.
Okay, and um if we can, councillor, um president, uh Letterman, should we, what do we need to do to get on the agenda?
Let's vote it out of committee so it can get on the agenda for the seventeenth and we'll just connect with councillor Fenton. I, he did tell me that was his concern. So um I'm not sure he realized that it was on the agenda for today. So let's um, I I make a motion that we uh vote this uh out of committee.
I second anyone?
Two members of the.
Okay, so I second it. All in favor.
I.
All right, so we'll move it out of committee and it will have it on the agenda for the um our next meeting.
Okay.
Okay. And then we'll get, of course, we'll get councillor um Fenton's input um in between that. Um any other, anything else, um Chris or anyone else that, we still got five minutes left. I gave you guys ten more minutes.
No, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure we had that discussion.
Okay, great. Well, thank you very much, Chris, for bringing that up and for reminding us. Okay, if there's nothing else, I will adjourn the meeting.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye. Have a great afternoon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.